Comments, then we'll move to council comments. There is no further comments, then we'll move on with the remainder of the agenda for this evening. So at this time, I will open up for citizens' comments. Is there anyone that has citizens' comments as related to the public hearing and the sewer rate increase? If you have citizens' comments, please move forward. State your name and address for the record.
Mayor, do we need to inform them what the conditions are of?
We will. Is the sewer rate increase for the public hearing? Oh, no, okay. So are there any council comments? Seeing that there's no council comments, we'll move forward with the invocation on this evening. We'll close the public hearing? I'm sorry. We'll close the public hearing. Now I'll call for Mr. Kevin Falk, Minister with Greater Faith Church, to have our invocation this evening, followed by Ms. Corrin for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for all that you've done for us and all of us being able to come here today, saving sound. We pray that as these deliberations proceed, that you would just bless us all with the wisdom to make the correct decisions for the best possible good and most possible amount of people. Lord, we just pray that as we, as our leaders, make these choices and involve the citizens in that process, Lord, that we can all just be grateful to be in a position to have a voice and to live in a place where people with such great characters are in charge of what's going on in our city. And so, Lord, yeah, we thank you, we praise you, we pray that we'll be home safe tonight, and in Jesus' name we pray.
Okay. Councilwoman Corrin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll have citizens' comments. Citizens' comments.
I'm making, begging the A.D. and I.D. beggin', Williams, I live in Crickwood, Texas. And I have to pardon what the mayor picks, mayor, if correct one, okay? One of the problem I got is where I live at, we got handicap kids that don't know how to control themselves, their kids, so they'll walk out in front of vehicles. My question to the city council, city of, can we get a sign saying children playing or something like this, let me say, hey guys, you need to be careful while you're out in this area?
Is this sign for the, for vehicles passing through, is it just?
No, when you enter Crickwood, Texas, you should have a sign that says children playing. So people just gotta think, yeah, I don't think we can get such a thing as handicap kids, okay? So it should say children playing, shouldn't it?
I was just trying to clarify, I didn't understand what you were saying, so. I wasn't implying that's what it was, that's what I heard, so. So just a sign that says children at play.
Yeah, it should be an orange side, and that, that.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams, are any of you hearing impaired? If you're aware.
Hearing impaired. All right, right now, we, right now, I'm not a tickle desk, because we do think we did help when I lived with hearing impaired, so I complain about that too. But right now, I just want to do the children playing, let people know that if there's kids out there, they run in for a car. Also, I would like to know if we can, once before, I asked for, could we get the police department to come out there and set up a, well, let's say a speed trap. I drove a bus for five years. I know how fast it stopped a bus, it's about an hour per hour. I would like to have the machine that the police department got, that would tell them how fast they're going.
Speed training.
Speak, speak, okay? Because we need to slow the buses down, okay? That was another thing I would like to do. About 20 years ago, I was told, there's a couple things that we give us for each day to the city. One of them, they said they would give us a suicide system, we got it. Another, they said five students, we got it. Another, they said that we give was a light, streetlights. Well, also, they told I'd get a higher telephone bill. Well, I got a higher telephone bill, but I didn't get the streetlight, so. I would like to know, Father, you can't, you know what I'm saying? And I do appreciate that one streetlight that put on, 17, beautiful white streetlights, it was fantastic, got a little brown light, that was good. One more thing, I got to say. Not a fact, I got all three of them, that's all the things that I didn't do.
So, just to make sure I got everything, you said you needed the children at play sign, possible speed trap, or us using our city police trailer to try to let people know how fast they were going, and also slowing down the buses and the streetlights.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments? Okay, we'll move on with the agenda this evening. It is the special guest presentation. The first one that we have this evening is for our Ruby Dew Centennial Celebration that we had. We want to recognize those that had partaking in it, the planning and the execution, it was a great event. So at this time, I'm going to call for Loue Hardman, and she will first present to the city a proclamation from?
Senator Brown.
Senator Brown.
Testing, testing. I am? Okay. Well, first of all, Sean, let me say, what a joy it was to work with all you guys. And I see several came in while I was not looking, so I'm so glad to see you here. It was a joy to work with these people. We only had about two meetings, and we got a lot of stuff done. And that's the kind of committee that you want to have, right? So first of all, thanks to them, it was a joy to work with you. Sean has already said that we really called our ceremony a success. I think most of the city council people were there, I guess almost all of you, but maybe one or two. I think we probably had 150 to 200 people there who'd be my guests, and it was a very, very good day. I want to thank the city employees who worked very, very hard, especially in the park department, our volunteers that worked so hard to get the park ready in Laughlin area, as well as the Ruby Dew area. I want to thank all of our sponsors, I will not read them all. We had several wonderful sponsors, in fact, two of them, three of them on our committee. So, the other thing that I wanted to say was to thank the citizens for coming out and for supporting such a nice reminder that local history's important. And I think when we forget our local history, we forget really the foundation of our city. And so, as long as I'm here, I'm going to work to try to make sure that that's done. And then, one of our special guests didn't show up that day, and it was Justin, State Senator Justin Brown. And he sent this to my house, I don't know why, Sean, he should have sent it to you, but I guess he had my address. So he has a resolution here from the State Senate for the city, and so if you would come forward, Sean, I'll give that to you before we do the committee. And I'm not going to read this to you, you may clap now, okay? But it basically says, whereas the members of the Missouri Senate believe it is altogether fitting and proper to pause from time to time to recognize milestones in the history of Missouri, and they recognize the 100th anniversary of the Ruby Dew Bridge. Official.
Yeah.
And if you want to make sure I get that, I'll send it to his office, I've got him on email. Congratulations, thank you, thank you. Sean would say upfront here, we're going to recognize our committee members, and really the reason that you wanted to be here tonight was to get one of these beautiful coins that the city designed, and they are wonderful keepsakes, these commemorative coins. One side has Route 66 on them, the other side is a picture of our logo, which included, of course, the Ruby Dew Bridge. So I'm going to call our committee members forward, and if you would, take your coin, stand beside Sean, and we'll get a picture of the group, okay? Some of us couldn't be here tonight, but with us tonight, Mayor Sean Wilson, bam. Loue Hardman. We've already got one. My co-leader, my co-leader, there you go, is Jack Welburn. And Jackie, had a death in her family recently, and she's just now getting back to work, and she could not be here tonight. Keith Pritchard, President of Security Bank of Plassey County, and also one of our sponsors. Thank you.
You gave me a coin.
Along with Keith, Mike Dunbar, and Mike could not be here tonight, and I believe Sean will make sure that Mike gets one of the coins. Michelle Brown, but she does not want to stand up, but she's right there. Okay, get a coin, though. Okay. Doug Potts, our economic developer, worked very hard on this. Thank you, Doug. His compadre, Jennifer Worth, and she's just in the way, get up there, this picture. Come on, come on. Michelle can ride. You're recording. Councilman Rob Rice.
You got a coin? You got a coin, now we're going. Did I beat the coin? No. Appreciate it.
Denise Severs.
Thank you very much.
Denise designed our banner that you see on the bridge, and I said, be sure and remind the city to be sure and keep one of those, it would look really nice here in the council chambers. Oh, and she's the director of the museum. My good friend Ursula Loyoda from Hoppers. Ursula wasn't able to get it at every meeting, but she sure did offer some good type of case, and she takes instructions well.
Congratulations, thank you.
Another member who's not here tonight, and I did want to recognize her, is Beth Wiles. Beth Wiles is the Director of the Tourism Bureau, but the amazing PR that she gave us was well worth everything that she put into it. And oh my goodness, if you were there that night, Terry Premus, who was our guest speaker and featured speaker, Terry could not be here tonight, he does have a coin, I believe the mayor gave him one that night, that day. But Terry, I watched those high school kids, there were a bunch of high school kids in the front, and of course, I'm setting up on stage, and I'm seeing them. Well, first of all, you could tell you the teacher, because he kept bringing those kids into the discussion, you know? And I'm telling you, those kids, if you were on the stage, they never took their eyes off Mr. Premus. I mean, he was telling stories that they were so interested in. So our compliments to Terry Premus, again, a great job. My friend Randy Brown, Randy is a former superintendent of our parks, and is always supportive of activities for the city. And another one that's not here tonight is our former representative, Steve Lynch, he is out of town, and so I thank him also for his participation. Did I miss anybody? All right, we're going to get our picture man. Scooch in there, guys. There we go.
Scooch, scooch, scooch. Yeah. We'll kind of do it halfway.
Look at him first, and then I'll take the city one.
All right, say Ruby Dew. Ruby Dew!
Ready? One, two, three. Good.
Mike, hold your coins up. Some of them, they have them, they already have them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you very much, thank you.
I really feel like we should just do a city proclamation, and you know, it's not sound Catholic, and everybody's different.
And Sean, thank you for this opportunity, we have to be a guy, working with all the city people, it's a wonderful opportunity.
Can we do that, can we do like a city proclamation where we just rename him downtown?
Yes.
Okay. It took a community to put on that community event, we thank everybody for their efforts again. We'll move on to a recognition from, of the construction department, John Qualley and Dustin Waits, for the work they did on the handicap accessible ramp in the sidewalk. Now, if anybody had, I'm going to ask them to come forward. Did you want to say anything, John? Well, I want to tell you that just driving through, they may not have seen it, and I'm going to go down here in a minute, but I want to make sure that everyone hears it on the live feed. But anytime you have business owners, take the time to recognize the work that city workers are doing, I think it's something that we need to make sure as many people as possible know the hard work that is done by city workers. These are the unsung heroes, these are the ones we don't know, they're not on the forefront in that sense, but they're out there doing the work every single day. When something, something needs to be done, they're the ones that are called to do it. We may get the call, but they're doing the work, and that, so I want to just show appreciation for the hard work that they have done. If you go down there and look in the front of Lone Oak, they reconfigured the handicap accessible access, they cleaned up that entire area, it's beautiful, it's almost rock free, right? There on that corner there, and plus, like I said, the business owner, Tim Berrier, he was like, man, they did an outstanding job, they was working for perfection. So I wanted to present them both with city coins tonight to show our appreciation for their hard work. Let's get them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He stopped, and was like, oh my gosh, are you okay?
He saved your life?
He did.
Not quite.
Good job, guys.
We did have one other.
Do you want to stay?
Under subparagraph Charlie, we had Amber Nicole, who was going to present a painting of the Ruby Dew Bridge, could not make it tonight, we will set up something later for her. We will now have our park board appointment of Lynn Morgan, and I don't see her here, but this is going to be a, I need a motion to appoint Lynn Morgan to the park board, you should have her bio within your package.
Take a motion.
That's right. Say it again.
By a different name.
Yes, that's true. So we have a motion by Mr. Davis, we have a second by Mr. Liberty, discussion.
I'm glad we're getting volunteers.
So, by show of hands, roll call. All right, give me a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we now have our appointment to the planning and zoning, and I will entertain a motion for Mr. Mark Cordesini.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Liberty.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farnum. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Next, we have our municipal court, William Hudson, the municipal judge, and Henry Sircam?
Sircam.
Yeah, Sircam, he is the city prosecutor, this is a reappointment, I'll entertain a motion for that.
A second.
Who's, who did the motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, motion by Amanda, second by Mr. Hyatt, roll call.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we now have our appointment to the planning and zoning, and I will entertain a motion for Mr. Mark Cordesini.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Liberty.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farnum. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and we now have our appointment to the planning and zoning, and I will entertain a motion for Mr. Mark Cordesini.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Liberty.
Second.
Second by Mr. Farnum. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Farnum?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Next, we have our municipal court, William Hudson, the municipal judge, and Henry Sircam?
Sircam.
Yeah, Sircam, he is the city prosecutor, this is a reappointment, I'll entertain a motion for that.
A second.
Who's, who did the motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, motion by Amanda, second by Mr. Hyatt, roll call.
Councilwoman Corrin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rice?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnum?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so now on to our boards of commission and liaison reports, we will start first with our park board by Mr. Malala, the chairman, from the reporting of April 13th.
Thank you, Mayor.
Try to use the, try to use the mic if you can, so they can hear you online.
We call the order at 5:00 P.M. Amanda Corrin is now our city councilor chair, and we're happy about that. Smith Cave has been a longtime member on our board as we signed for the park board, so I'm glad to hear we have another person on board. We have gained two new board members, Rachel Watson and David Neely. Now, there was a couple of the chins visited, and they would like to paint the totem pole in Ruby Dew Park. They said the last time it was painted was 2009. They only asked for us to buy the paint and help with the scaffolding. I know they'll do all the work. The master gardeners, the improvements of the demo garden are ongoing, and they plan on having a community garden for too long. Our next meeting will be on May the 11th at 5:00 P.M. We adjourn at 16:00.
Thank you, are there any questions for Mr. Malala?
No questions?
All right, thank you. There was no need, there was, there wasn't any planning and zoning, so we'll forego that, and we'll go to, unless you got any comments, Mr. Davis? No? All right, so state the committee reports, utility, Councilman Conley.
Okay, we have our regular meeting on March the 7th at 3:30, myself, Councilman Rice, and Councilman Liberty are present, along with the city staff and our reporter. We approved the minutes, then we looked at, posed committee week schedule boards and committee appointments, and approved all of those. Then we talked about a rate increase for the sewer, water, electric, and natural gas increases. And we voted to increase the sewer rate effective January the 1st. The water district, the water rate would be increased effective June 1st of this year. Electric goes up in September, and natural gas goes up in, also in June. Councilwoman Willa Wilson made the motion to take those to council, and we have ordinances for those this evening. Mr. Beal gave us a update on sewer water, it had three sewer backups, and jet dows and clean them. They removed the roots from a manhole the settlers passed, repaired a four-inch main on Hospital Road, five service lines, and installed 1,000 feet of eight-inch water main in Rowland's new subdivision. They also installed two new hydrants and six new valves on the new main line, cleaned the clarifiers twice a week, assisted other departments in removing trees in the RV park, besides daily dig rights. The natural gas department, Mr. Yorks, said his department had installed 900 feet of main line in Rowland's new subdivision, made the end-of-year checks with the Public Service Commission, and they did cathodic protection on the main lines, they're keeping up the daily work orders and dig rights. In the electric department, Mr. Sheldon said that they had done three power outages, two streetlights, three miscellaneous, two new services, two new tests, one service upgrade. What's the work in the RV park? And they continue to work on Rowland Phase Two, maintenance has gone on all their trucks, cut trees, kept up the dig rights. And our single-phase reclosure saved six power outages. No further business, we adjourn at 4:12.
Are there any questions for Mr. Conley? We have two ordinances that need to be voted on tonight, it is going to be 2023-11, water rate increase.
An ordinance amending the rates and fees of the city's utility water service fixing effective dates. Second reading, an ordinance amending the rates and fees of the city's utility water service fixing effective dates.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. A motion by Mr. Conley, second by Mr. Hyatt, discussion.
Mayor, I ask, I do this every time, if the need is there to keep the city on level dollar-wise, I can see it as raising rates. If we're making any money, we're breaking even, I can't see it as raising. So my question is, are we at the point that we're not really going to be breaking even if we don't raise it here?
Yes, so, again, kind of addressed that. With, with the cost of service study, cost of service study that was completed along with planned required projects coming from DNR, we have just this example with the water service. We have two requirements coming down from DNR to increase our system awareness, one of them would be a service line study, which is to be completed by '24, as well as additional testing, and also additional fire flow requirements. This hopefully keeps us up with the water as far as financially, looking at it from a financial side. If anything, and as we discussed in the committee, if anything, these raises may be, they are all less than the cost of service study requires, or that they estimate we should be at, and we look at it as a city in two ways. We looked at the cost of service study to say, hey, they want us here, and then we look at it from the financial side, Bill, as well as when you do the audit on each department, we think we can do it for less, so.
Well, the reason I ask is we added a lot of new homes in the city, that's new customers that uses the product, and I figured if we have more cash coming in, that if we were at the point where we weren't going to be breaking even, I'd just re-rate it. I mean, we have money that we use on those programs that count all tax. I mean, we, we have money that we use on those programs that's not all taxpayer.
Right.
Neighborhood improvement range.
Right, so, some, some of the, just a small example, when you have an electric increase to the city, that increase not only affects your electric rates, it affects your entire, all your systems. It, it will affect your sewer treatment rate, it will affect your water supply rate, because the, as the electric cost to the city increases, obviously, we use a lot of electric within the system to, to treat those, so we have experienced in the city other increases from these utilities for, you know, for electric, and then, again, there are mandates that are required, we have a, we have a service line study that DNR is requiring to be completed by 2024, these were, this study wasn't even, it, it was not on the radar at all by the city in, at all in twenty-two, we just kind of got made aware of that, and.
Is that an unfunded mandate?
Yes, sir. And, and I say that, it's unfunded for some, some got it funded, there's another opportunity to get it funded, we, we applied for funding, for grant funding through ARPA funds, through, you know, DNR, and was not selected, and I don't know any city that was selected, but there, I'm sure there were some that may have been, but the city of Waynesville was, was not selected for that, we plan to go back and apply in a different manner, but some of these improvements, again, are just requirements that kind of keep up with the times, and, and make sure that you're inventorying your system per the requirements from EPA.
Lydette. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, Colerole.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
We have a proposed ordinance, HB twenty-two-three dash twelve, this is a sewer rate increase.
An ordinance amending the rates and fees of the city's utility service, sewer service fixing effective dates. Second reading, an ordinance amending the rates and fees of the city's utility sewer service fixing effective dates.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mr. Connolly. Discussion. No discussion, no discussion, Madam Clerk, Colerole.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Economic Development, Government Affairs Committee, Councilman Rice.
Yes, the meeting came to order on April third at 5:00 P.M. We had to amend the agenda to include a closed session for RESMO sixteen dot dot zero-two-one for real estate. We had some citizens' comments from citizen Jerry Brown, who inquired about the parking lot area that would include an electric vehicle charging station by the Dollar General, and asked if it was an ingredient the city had with Dollar General. Mr. Doyle stated it is not related to the Dollar General, they have no interest in EV charging stations, this was just an idea that was proposed for the city to have an EV charging station in the new parking lot that will be owned and maintained by the city. The parking lot would be separate from the Dollar General by, separated from the Dollar General by a fence. We approved the minutes from the March seventh meeting, we discussed the business spotlight for April, which is Eclectic Originals? Eclectic Originals, sorry. We had the small, we talked about the small business enhancement program, Mr. Doug Potts received completed applications from Druckenfutter, Lost in the Woods Antiques, Homegrown Country Kitchen, and the business named Just Because. Mr. Potts recommends granting five thousand to each business, which would be the rest of the funding available for this program. It, it passed. We also discussed a small business renovation demolition grant, Mr. Potts provided the application for the grant, the grant is for commercial use, total funding in the program is fifty thousand dollars, grant award minimum would be five thousand, and the maximum would be fifteen thousand. We also discussed the Community Development Block Grant, Mr. Doyle met with Mr. Castor Napkatz, I didn't pronounce that right probably, last week, Mr. K is very passionate about finding and purchasing rundown properties and flip for livable homes, he was interested in the steps the city has taken, Mr. Doyle stated Mr. K's vision and direction are the same as the city, but the process for him and the city are different. The city works through a baitment process, which takes time, after speaking, he understands the city's restraints in being able to help. Mr. Doyle let him know that, about the Community Development Block Grant, however, there are some complexities to it, such as requirements of landowner to keep property to certain standards after funding, and indeed restrictions. We discussed the special events, which the hundredth anniversary of the Rubenue Bridge went on April first, and coming up, the Kids Day, Kids to Park Day, June third. We had a need for closed session, we entered closed session at 5:27 P.M., and came out at 6:09 P.M. Having no further business, the meeting adjourned at 6:09 P.M. The next scheduled meeting will be held May first at 5:00 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, are there any questions for Mr. Rice? We'll move on to Rhodes and Grounds, Councilman Barton.
Rhodes and Grounds Committee met on April fourth at 4:00 P.M. First business was called up order in citizens' comments, citizen Randy Brown stated he would like to have someone from the street department come in and take a look at the one-way street signs on block circle, signs are hard to read, probably all picked it up, and maybe be cleaned or replaced, also, he'd like to condition the one-way street sign plate. Then we approved the minutes from the previous meeting, Councilman Liberty made the motion, Councilman Connolly seconded, motion passed. Mr. Doyle introduced those to Amanda and Joe Woodside, owners of one ninety-seven Sunset, who are interested in getting an easement off of Sunset, potentially off city property for a driveway. After quite a little bit of discussion, we all agreed that that probably would be a good thing for him, Councilman Liberty made the motion to give easement, Councilman Connolly seconded, motion passed. Northland Street came up again about removing the one-way. We've discussed this a number of times over the years, and the committee finds it best left the way it is, one-way going down for a jail. So hopefully, this is put to bed, that street is just too narrow to make it a two-way, and really harm the businesses and the church. Project updates, Mr. Doyle stated the street department has been busy with a lot of different projects, including the RV expansion. Then we discussed Sweetburg Road, the process, process to fix that part, and we're still waiting to receive a few more easements from property owners in order to begin the process to redirect the water that goes under Streetburg Road, which has caused the most of the issues. Another area, Tiffin Road, needs work due to flooding. Briar Point, we were told, and the leaning road sign that needs to be fixed, Mr. Jason Chapman, our road foreman, supervisor, stated last week, seven different signs were stolen in the city, and three more in the past week. Why somebody would want to steal a sign is beyond me, unless they want to hang it in their bedroom wall, but. Other updates from Mr. Chapman, said they've been busy Holland Rock for Phase Two, Brown and subdivision, he said the city received a new excavator through the Diesel Emissions Reduction Act grant, the grant will reimburse twenty-five percent of costs. They've been working on extending Mason, and we're visiting Drudge Road, and putting in curtains and girders. Having no further business, we adjourn at 4:46 P.M. The next meeting is scheduled for May second at 4:00 P.M.
Thank you, Mr. Barton, are there any questions for Mr. Barton? We'll move on to Police Committee, Mr. Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 3:30, Mr. Doyle provided last year's officer statistic, and Mr. Doyle also expressed his desire to have the officers develop a daily log in order to track daily activity, since the CAD system, which is a system that dispatch and stuff uses, does not do that tracking. This will set a little, level of expectation to the community, and pro, provide insight to the police committee on what the department has done, and the police committee had agreed that that's what we want to see. Fire Chief Schimper provided the update, all initial business inspections have been completed, there are some that still need re-inspection, although he said it's very minor things. CPR first aid training been provided, is it still going, or all completed?
Completed this week.
Completed this week, all city employees, excuse me, and that was provided by St. Robert Fire Department. Police Department updates, Chief Cordova stated several officers went through critical incident debrief in regards to the murder case last month, there was another child fatality that was a medical case, in which officers were also debriefed on. This is very important for things that officers, to include fire C, that there needs to be a debrief to help them deal with what they saw and experienced. Mr. Doyle provided a few updates, April is the month of military child, Waynesville officers are wearing blue badges this month to show awareness for autism. The month of April is also Child Abuse Awareness Month, May tenth, Community Salute to Service Day, City Hall will be closed on May twenty-ninth, and Observance Memorial Day. There is a need for closed session, Councilman Connolly made that motion to go into closed session, I second, we entered closed session, came back out, closed session at 5:01 P.M. Being no further business, I adjourn the meeting at 5:01, next meeting is May fourth, two thousand twenty-three, at 3:30 P.M. All are welcome to come.
Thank you, Mr. Liberty, are there any questions for Police Committee? We'll move forward with Finance and Human Resources, Mr. Council, Councilman Davis.
Finance and Human Resources Committee was called to order April sixth, two thousand twenty-three at 5:09 P.M., the police and emergency services are in a little long. Councilman Barton is going to serve as the third member due to Councilman Corin's absent. Corin was established, we approved the minutes from the previous month, we, we approved paying bills for the month also, cash flow, account status, end-of-year budget review, committee reviewed the city's cash flow reports, bank accounts, and year-to-date budget, the city has completed twenty-five percent of the 2023 fiscal year with expenses at twenty-eight percent and revenues at twenty-eight percent, city accounts have a total of six million nine hundred and three dollars, nine hundred and three thousand dollars, three hundred and six dollars and eight cents in restricted funds, reverse reserve funds, and usable monies. Westgate Community Improvement District update, committee reviewed the CID sales tax collection summary, in the packet, Mr. Doyle stated that McDonald's is slated for a massive renovation that will affect the 2023 totals while it's out of operation. ARPA projects, the monthly update, Mr. Doyle stated the construction was complete on the RV park expansion, however, recent floodwaters required some maintenance on electric hookups. ARPA monies will be refunded back to the city's account this month for a total of all invoices on that park, the new economic development incentive program has received several applications, and all thirty thousand dollars has been granted, we talked about that earlier, those companies, business awarded are Hot Dogs, Druckenfutter, Lost in the Woods Antiques, Homegrown Country Kitchen, and Just Because. The next projects will be the animal shelter renovation, and the upgrades to the leaf and limb dump. Budget adjustment for the deer grant, the deer grant is the one for the new excavator, Mr. Doyle stated the need for a budget adjustment to accommodate the grant match for the, for the excavator, the grant amount for approximately fifty thousand dollars to purchase the department bucket truck at two hundred thousand, we were originally told the vehicle did not qualify, however, after further review, it does. The, Mr. Miss Box requested the funds be pulled from the utility reserve fund and paid back over time to preclude a high-interest loan. Councilman Hyatt made a motion to forward the, an ordinance to adjust fiscal year 2023 budget for a bucket truck, and it's here at City Council for approval. Solicitation of vehicle bids, Mr. Doyle stated that the enterprise fleet management program, vehicles have started to get here, the vehicles advertised for the bids were done in the Dixon Pilot for two consecutive weeks, all bids were due Friday the twenty-fourth by 5:00 P.M. We reviewed the bids, Councilman Barton made a motion to accept the bid on a twenty, on all the vehicles, and a vote was called, all, the motion passed. A review of the bank signature cards, Miss Box stated we need reissue of city Waynesville signature cards due to the recent impeachment, appointments, and elections. Councilman Barton made a motion to reissue all city's signature cards to include the mayor and city administrator, city clerk, and finance director's signs, motion was seconded, vote passed. Other business, City Hall will be closed Monday the twenty-ninth, and Observance Memorial Day, there was a need for closed session, motion was made by Bill Barton to go into closed session, and Councilwoman Hyatt. Motion passed, we returned at 6:27, there were no votes coming out of closed session, we adjourned at 6:27, next meeting will be held, be held May fourth, may the fourth be with you, 2023 at the 5:00 P.M. I will be watching Return of the Jedi.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, are there any questions for Mr. Davis? We do have a ordinance, proposed ordinance, HB twenty-two-three dash thirteen, it is a budget adjustment to an electric bucket truck.
An ordinance amending the 2023 annual budget for the purchase of an electric bucket truck fixing an effective date, second reading, an ordinance amending the 2023 annual budget for the purchase of an electric bucket truck fixing an effective date.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Barton? Second, Mr. Connolly? Discussion?
I'd like to clarify, this is electric bucket truck, doesn't run on electric, it's to fix the electric truck.
Yes. All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have the Waynesville-St. Robert Joy Airport by Mr. Liberty.
Meeting was called to order at 3:00 P.M. on May, May, March twenty-eighth, administration budget was provided to the board, Mr. Doyle stated the budget was at roughly twenty-five percent for the year, with revenues at eleven percent, and expenses at eleven percent. Fuel sales tracked to sixteen percent. I made a motion to approve the budget, ready to back second, and the motion passed, and budget approved. Airport manager, Mike Guy, stated fuel sales are back on track, operations are going well. Contour Airlines have stated that their time performance is on track in mid-seventies, which Engineers have responded to our comments from Fort Leonardwood FAA. Hope to wrap up as soon as possible. Follow-up meeting for the airport terminal will be April 13th, 2023, 1:00 PM in Waynesville City Hall. Approval from MoDOT to begin terminal design prior lease. Burns McDonald's hope to have scope for design by next month. State Aviation Trust Fund application was due April 14th, and this was for marketing SOP marketing report, Aaron Yonkin, provided a marketing report. New website has been created for the WSRA. It was launched recently, so we'll be able to provide analytics and data for the site moving forward. There was a need for closed session. Randy Beck made that motion. I second. We run into closed session, 3:32. Return open session at 3:52. Being no further business, Chairman Larson adjourned the meeting at 3:52 PM. Next meeting Tuesday, April 25th, at 3:00 PM, Waynesville Municipal.
Thank you, Mr. Liberty. Any questions for Airport? We'll move on to other business, where I will entertain a motion for the appointment of Trudy Dills to Ward Three in the open seat. Motion by Mr. Conley.
I second.
Second by Mr. Hyatt. Discussion. Madam Clerk.
Councilman Farnum.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt.
Yes.
Councilman Rice.
Yes.
Councilman Liberty.
Yes.
Councilman Conley.
Yes.
Councilman Corin.
Yes.
So we will go forward with the certification of the election results. For Ward One, we had Mr. Farnum. Ward Two, Mr. Liberty. Ward Four, we had Ms. Amanda Corin, and also Mr. Hyatt. I need a motion and a second to accept this certification of the election.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we have to put up the man of the year?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
By show of hands, those that affirm the certification.
So, with the following coming down. First, please.
So all of those that have just been elected for their ward for the term, first term or reelected, need to come forward so you can just take it.
You would be swayed.
Yeah.
Is that the reason Mike's been here all night? To take a picture?
Yep.
You should make her a picture.
Welcome to the circus.
How do we want to do this, so you can get everybody in a shot and me not?
No.
Okay. Everybody raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Robert.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will faithfully execute
That I will faithfully execute
the duties of the office of councilperson?
The duties of the office of councilperson.
Of the city of Waynesville, Missouri?
Of the city of Waynesville, Missouri.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend?
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The constitutions of the United States?
The constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Missouri?
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all the laws of the state?
The provisions of all the laws of the state.
Affecting cities of the third class?
Affecting cities of the third class.
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville?
And the ordinances of the city of Waynesville.
I shall faithfully?
I shall faithfully.
Conduct myself in office?
Conduct myself in office.
And respect the confidences?
And respect the confidences.
And information?
And information.
Which comes into my possession?
Which comes into my possession.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Troublemaker, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Oh, thank you, ma'am. Here, your arm.
You can take your seat up and...
Okay.
I'm retiring next year.
This photo session. You want the whole council? All right. Here, or down there?
We usually have kind of everybody stand with flags in their bag.
All the tightrope.
Yep.
Do we all sit? I thought some sat.
Did some sit?
Let's do three sit.
And we're clearing ours about how far I can get, so maybe if you could sit down.
I can set up my chair.
I want Bob to put his hand on my shoulder.
There you go.
That awkward family photo.
It's gonna be the cover photo on Facebook page, so.
Well, you better make sure we're balanced.
Okay, one, two, three. Then I'm gonna come up here and see if we can get a little closer.
You all look so fancy. It's gonna make you stand there for a long time. One, two, three. Gotcha.
How many people blink their eyes?
I think like five, so hopefully.
Probably just you, though.
I had to sit down so the city couldn't see my guts.
Okay, the next order of business is the floor is open for nominations for the term of Mayor Pro Tem for this next year. We entertain any nominations?
I make a motion. I mean, I make a nomination.
Okay.
Clarence Lickery.
Okay.
I'll second that. He's done a great job for the last month.
Are there any other nominations for Mayor Pro Tem for the next year? All right, with that said, we will, I'll entertain a motion for Mr. Liberty as the, well, those that would like to vote for Mr. Liberty will do a roll call.
Councilman Farnum?
Sure.
Councilman Davis?
He's the sucker, sure.
Councilwoman Dose?
Yes.
Councilman Hyatt?
Yes.
Councilman Rice?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
I support.
Okay. Councilman Conley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corin?
Yes.
Okay, so welcome, Mr. Liberty, as Mayor Pro Tem for the next term.
Thank you, everyone.
Committee appointments. Everyone has the committee appointments before them. We have one change amendment to this, and that is under Finance and Human Resource. It should have Trudy Dills as a replacement for Bob Hyatt. With that change, I'll entertain a motion to approve the committee assignments for this next year. Mr. Rice made the motion. Mr. Davis, second. Discussion. Show of hands, those that affirm the committee assignments for the next year. All right, that passes. City administrators' report.
I know, go through, a lot of my reports is gonna be redundant, or we have seen somewhere throughout this meeting this evening. One thing that I'd like to update the council and possibly the community is the Dollar General update. We had met with the contractor earlier this week. To date, the city electric department has provided service to the site and has verified connection locations and transformer locations on the site for the building. The city water and wastewater department have also verified connection locations for service of the building, and the natural gas department has verified locations for servicing the building. The developer plans on the building being delivered mid-May. That is, the structure itself with red iron and brick and the construction should be expected to be completed by the end of June. Utility rate analysis, we have kind of spoke about that. TAP grant, the, met with the engineer actually today on the TAP grant. The schedule for that, we are actually on schedule for design to begin somewhere, he thought, into April through May. They've had conversation with MoDOT about the process of this grant. Again, the grant, the TAP grant, is the one with sidewalk extension, I think you guys are aware, from Morton Street to the bridge. But that is currently on schedule. You will start seeing surveyors along that route, and know kind of heads up what's going on. Again, the Deer Grant, we had just spoke about, which was the electric bucket truck, electric department bucket truck. You're welcome. And it's a great need, these bucket trucks. We use them a lot. They make our job easier. This is a, this truck can reach some very high poles that we have, and very pleased to hear that they reconsidered the grant and was able to put this vehicle into the grant. And then upcoming events, one thing I would like to, again, bring awareness to is tomorrow, we have a best sapper competition in our Waynesville City Park. This is the first time ever that this competition has come, even a little portion of this competition has come off of Fort Leonardwood into the communities, and the goal of this is to bring communities in contact with the Army, to see truly what they do. Meet the soldier, meet the Army, watch this. I will tell you that you will want to be there for opening ceremonies, if at all possible. There are some really cool static displays. We will have the park closed most of the day tomorrow, preparing for this event, and I cannot stress enough, if you have the opportunity, go to opening ceremonies, as you will, you know, I will tell you, you will see aircraft in the park, they will be landing, soldiers will be coming out of them. It is really cool. I've been to what we termed a dress rehearsal of this. It's a very neat event. I'm so pleased they chose the city of Waynesville's park to be a host for this, and at the end of the day, you get some free barbecue, and you can't go wrong with that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Yeah, make sure you join us on tomorrow. Now we will go with the councilman updates, and we will start with Mr. Conley.
That's true, you never start in the middle of a meeting.
Does everybody always take your comments, or?
Well, I would just, I like to welcome our new council member, and I'm looking forward to working with her. I'm sure it will be a pleasure, at least for me, it may not be for her. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead of Ms. Corin.
So, I want to thank everybody who came out to vote. Seemed like a pretty good turnout for an off-time to be voting, so thank you for getting out and going to the polls. Thank you for being involved in our community. I'm so excited to see all the volunteers that are stepping up for committees and boards. Welcome, Trudy. I'm so excited to have another female sitting up here with me, and on top of it, a female that I respect, so welcome. Welcome again to Bob. This is now for real, you know? Your people voted you in this time, yeah, so all real stuff. So, I'm excited for what this council is gonna do. So, Cecil, somebody has to stay here and keep you in line.
Probably.
Thank you all. Thank you, city. Thank you for everything that you do. You all make this look good every day.
We'll go with Mr. Farnum next, and we'll work our way back this way.
Well, I'd like to also say thank you to the people that out voted. I've had, I guess you'd call it class clown, and I also got asked a lot of questions. I'm not helping get anybody or cause trouble, but I was raised that if you didn't know the answer to something, you ask. And I think too much of that is missing at today's age. People get on their website, and they just bash people without asking, actually asking to see if they can find out your careers. Very evident, just look at Facebook and see what I'm talking about. Thank you all, and welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mr. Farnum.
There are zero chances that Dills is the class clown. My comments is, it's beer barbecue season again. Pay attention to kids. You know, I live up in the summit. If you take a right on summit and go down Mesa, there is probably 20 to 30 kids at any time. They give dabs to you in the park. There's one little boy who barely knows how to ride a bike. Pay attention to him. You don't want to be the one that nicks somebody's kid or anything like that, because everybody knows, family first, and take care of everybody's family as well as your own.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Dills.
Thank you for inviting me to sit on this council, and I hope I can fulfill your needs. Thank you.
I would like to thank Trudy Dills for coming on board with us. I think I should be a great part of the city council. Also, welcome the new Mayor Pro Tem. I think we have a very positive and proactive group here that's gonna do a lot of things this year. I'm very excited about it, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Mr. Rice.
Yes, Luke did a wonderful job earlier, but since it won't happen again for another hundred years, I want to thank everyone. Again, it was while the Ruby Dune Bridge 100th anniversary, Century of Service celebration. Master ceremony, Steve Lynch. The mayor of Waynesville, Sean Wilson. Lieutenant Governor of Missouri, Mike Kehold. Missouri State Senator, Justin Brown. Missouri State Representative, Bill Hardwick. Brigadier General of Fort Leonardwood, Sean Crockett. Missouri Department of Transportation Representative, Michelle Watkins. Route 66 Association of Missouri Chairman, Rich Dinkella. Guest speaker, local historian, author, and retired educator, Terry Primus. Music by the Waynesville High School Jazz Band, and Director Jared Sabatso. Also, huge thanks to the committee members, Jack Swellborn, Luke Hardman, Michelle Brown, Beth Wiles, Jennifer Worth, Doug Potts, Keith Pritchard, Denise Severs, Ursula Lubododa, Mayor Sean Wilson again, Randy Brown downtown, Terry Primus, Mike Dunbar, John Doyle, and myself. Thank you, and I appreciate you coming.
And I hope all the kids get him a crack. Sabatasa. I couldn't pronounce it right, five U's. Some of my kids were in that.
Thank you, Mr. Rice, and Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Liberty.
Thank you, everyone, for the turnout for the voting, and I thank the council for their confidence in me. Also, I would like to bring up a point. We just...
Lieutenant Governor of Missouri, Mike Keighol. Missouri State Senator, Justin Brown. Missouri State Representative, Bill Hardwick. Brigadier General, Fort Leonardwood, Sean Crockett. Missouri Department of Transportation Representative, Michelle Watkins. The Route 66 Association of Missouri Chairman, Rich Dinkella. Guest speaker, local historian, author, and retired educator, Terry Primus. Music by the Waynesville High School Jazz Band and Director Jared Sabatasa. Also, huge thanks to the committee members, Jack Swellborn, Luch Hardman, Michelle Brown, Beth Wiles, Jennifer Worth, Doug Potts, Keith Pritchard, Denise Severs, Ursula Libadota, Mayor Sean Wilson again, Randy Brown downtown, Terry Primus, Mike Dunbar, John Doyle, and myself. Thank you. I appreciate you coming.
And I hope all the kids get him a crack. Sabatasa. I couldn't pronounce it right by you, and my kids weren't that.
Thank you, Mr. Rice and Mayor Pro Tem. Mr. Liberty.
Thank you, everyone, for the turnout for the voting, and I thank the council for their confidence in me. Also, I would like to bring up a point. We just discussed it just earlier, that I want people to realize that every person on this council lives in the city limits of Waynesville, and they voted for their own raise on the rates for electric and all that. So it affects us as much as it does our citizens. A lot of people don't understand that. And I regret that I will be out of town during the Sapper event. I was really looking forward to it. And thank all the staff and city employees for the great job that you continue to do.
Thank you, Ms. Liberty. I'm gonna go ahead and just share a few things. This month, I had the opportunity to sign several proclamations. This is the month of the military child. We also have the Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week that we had celebrated this month. Also acknowledging, of course, the word of autism awareness month. We experience Earth Day. Also, this is the one I want to kind of end with today, is the National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And everybody knows that we have lost a child this last month, and one of the initiatives that I would like the city of Waynesville citizens to participate in something. I went to one of the prayer vigils, and I had someone that, they stood up and asked the question, what is it that we can do? And I want to kind of give you something that we can do as citizens to help mitigate or bring more awareness to our responsibilities as a community, is to take the free mandated training course that is online. You can find it at protectmo kids dot com, and you'll learn about just what you need to look for. And I think if we have more eyes and ears attentive to the right things, then maybe we could help prevent a child, save a child's life. So that's what I would love for us to continue to do, is to make ourselves aware. That's the first step to create changes, to educate ourselves. Also, I want to further reiterate that we will join in the park, tomorrow's gonna be a great event. You want to be out there. And it's not just for the free food, but it's gonna be a great event, because if you have homeschooler kids, and you're looking for a trip, this is the trip they need to take. So I know we got a lot of great things going on in the community, but the park is where it's gonna be at tomorrow night. So show up there at 4:30. It's gonna be from 4:30 to about 7:00, and you get to meet the Sapper, and we will, you'll be able to talk to servicemen and women. You can watch other people run, you know? You can burn calories that way, too. But that's just something that I want to bring your attention in. Also, we are still looking for a member to our planning and zoning board. If we have someone that is interested in sitting on the planning and zoning board, please send an email to mbrown.waynesvillemo.org. All right? That's all I have. Enjoy your evening. This meeting is adjourned.